Janice is at work. How are you doing?
Good morning, everybody.
What is this?
Good morning.
I think your mate can hear me.
You knocked it off.
Sorry about that, Janice. I dropped my pen. How are you doing today? How are you doing? You didn't speak to him when you walked by. I was trying to get your attention. How are you?
Okay. Good morning. We're gonna call our April 30th Plan and Commission meeting in order. This time, we're gonna have Mr. Lay give us the invitation.
Father, thank you for the day that you've given us today. The DBO, Father, thank you for the privilege that we have to come to serve. Father, we pray for your continued blessing, your outpouring of your spirit and presence among us. Thank you, Father, for protecting us, providing for us, and blessing us. Father, this privilege that we have to handle the business of the county, Father, thank you that we don't take it for granted. Thank you that we get to participate in our government. Thank you for these men who have sacrificed, who are willing to come to serve. Father, give them the wisdom they need today. And bless all of those who are out there every day protecting us. Bring them home safely. Christ's sake.
Amen. Thank you, Craig. All right. Let's see here. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes? Motion. Motion by Jerry, seconded by Brad. Any discussion? All the papers say aye. Ayes have it. Old business?
There are two items of old business. Those will be coming up in the board meeting, the public hearings for those. I'm not sure if we need to review those or not. Y'all are good with them.
I think we're good. New considerations?
Yes, just one second. So the first item under new considerations is a rezoning request for Ricky Norton at 43 LLC at 4077 Highway 43 North. Mr. Norton is seeking to rezone 3.40 acres of a 19.35 acre parcel from RE1 to I-1. This property is located on the south side of Highway 43. That area shown in black is the 3.40 acres. That's an aerial view. This property is located next door to the Harbor Gate Mini Storage property there. This is the zoning map. You can see the I-1 zoning there. And then, these are views of that property. This is a view from 43. This is the entrance to Harbor Gate, the mini storage. This is the subdivision Harbor Gate. And then, these are surrounding properties. And they're here today if you have any questions for them.
I mean, maybe I'd just like to kinda just hear y'all's thoughts on it and talk me through it, if you don't mind. Yeah. Thanks for waiting in the hall out there.
That's quite an experience.
That's nice, isn't it?
Yeah.
Good morning. How y'all doing?
Good morning.
Good. So, uh, this is the Tullis Storage Complex. It's out on 43. And Ricky owns this 20 acres to the east. And basically, Tullis is wanting to purchase this three acres, which has no highway frontage at all. It's just basically going to his northeast corner and coming back to our back corner here on the south side. And he doesn't have any current intentions of doing anything with it other than maybe future expansion of his storage complex. But currently, there's no plans to come to you next week or anything like that. So he's just buying it for future.
So the area he's looking at doesn't have road front, just kinda back off the...
Yeah, it has. It actually... Can I?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
So this corner is actually his current corner.
Yeah.
So there'll be no, nothing on frontage or anything. And all this is, you know, Ricky owns all this, so that's gonna be the line. And it goes back to this corner here,
Yeah.
which is his corner. It kinda makes sense to square it up.
Okay.
So he's wanting to get that rectangle parcel? Is that it?
Yeah, it goes to the point.
Okay. Is that zoned industrial now?
Well, this is where the storages are. They just want this that's RE1 to match the I zoning there, I-1.
I think I'm good. I'll make a motion to set that public hearing.
Motion by Daniel, seconded by Steve. Any discussion? All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I tried to stack them all in here today. You see that? Just kinda boom, boom, boom.
They pass liquor. I think that liquor store right there, too.
What do you want to pass liquor?
The last time I talked to Representative up there, he said he was gonna do it for the whole county.
I didn't even thought it had attraction or anything.
It's gonna happen. I thought it was gonna happen.
I agree. I think it's gonna happen.
That'll be an ideal spot.
Oh, he is looking for it?
I didn't know that.
Right now.
People can stay in Rankin County. They can stay.
Yeah. Right. What's our next?
Linda Phillips is seeking a conditional use permit at 120 Little Ponderosa Drive. This property is located on the south side of 43. Ms. Phillips is seeking the conditional use permit to replace an existing manufactured home with a new double wide. She owns 6.50 acres. It's zoned RE1. That's an aerial view of that property. This is her site plan. The home will be placed right here. She has health issues and she needs her son to help care for her, so she's seeking the conditional use permit under the hardship section of the RE1 zone. This is a view of her property and her existing home.
Where would the new one go?
Same spot.
Same spot? Just replacing that? Is that right? Okay. Y'all wanna tell me about it real fast? Just... I'll let you kinda... Yeah, that's all right. I can't hear you. I'm bad on hearing.
She just wants to move that one out and replace it with a newer one 'cause it needs too much repair to live in it.
Okay.
But it was my grandmother's. It's a 1985. She's just gonna replace it with a newer model.
Okay, so that one comes out totally?
Totally.
Brand-new one comes in, or newer one comes in?
Correct.
I think I'm good.
That'd be nice.
I'll make a motion to set that public hearing.
Second. Motion by Daniel, seconded by Jared. Any discussion? All the papers say aye? Ayes have it.
Great. Thank y'all for waiting out there.
Thank you.
Just keep them coming toward me, Mr. Renee. You got more on there?
I like you. You're just having our whole...
I'm stacking them in there. This is the meeting. Y'all just here for the ride. This is Daniel's meeting. How you doing, sir? I got here a little late. How you doing?
You ain't got a walkie-talkie you call out there and tell them to come in?
Janice. Just checking on you. I'm on Janice today. Today's mine and Janice's day. I wanna get a Janice Dendi National Holiday in Rankin County. Can we do that?
Don't you look like a Dendi...
Slay, how do I do that? You gotta do a resolution or something like that? Be the national, Rankin County National Janice Dendi Day. I don't know what day we'd put it on. Do you? Day after Christmas, something like that? Day before Thanksgiving? I don't know what day we'd do it. I'm gonna do, I'm fixing to find a day to do a national Rankin... Well, not a national, but a Rankin County Janice Dendi Day.
Mark Haskins or Mike Love?
Everybody just show up... Hey, on that day, Slay, in the resolution, I want it to be on that day. Everybody just shows up when they want to. You know, you may come in for an hour or two here or there, you know? Full flexibility on that day.
Mark Haskins or Mike Love would be the only ones, but he said that he told them to go.
It'd be perfect. Probably 13 is good.
Will be the next.
All right, so the next item is a dimensional variance for Mark Haskins Dogwood Construction. This property is in Ventnor's Crossing. It's lot 26. And the street address is 304 Oakville Circle. Mr. Haskins is seeking a dimensional variance from the side setback. The property's zoned R1 and it requires 7.5 side setback. That's an aerial view of the property. When the survey was done on a neighboring lot, it was discovered that the house sits too far into the side setback, like 10 inches too close. So they're requesting a variance of 2.5 feet, which would allow a five-foot side setback from the north property line. So the house really, there was no room for error here on this lot. If they had got the setbacks right, it would have fit perfectly. But you can see in the next picture, or one of these pictures, the fence, they measured from the fence rather than the property line. And so the house is moved over too far, which affected the north side of the property. And so the lot next door, there's an issue because the house is too close. So they're asking for that side setback. A variance of 2.5 feet would make it a five-foot side setback.
Okay. I'll make that motion to set that here.
All right. Motion by Daniel? Second. Seconded by Steve. Any discussion? All the papers say aye?
Aye.
I oppose. Ayes have it. Thank y'all for coming.
That's not... They're not...
Oh, sorry. Thank y'all for coming.
Next is a conditional use permit for James R. and Wanda J. Denson at 306 B. Summers Road. B. Summers is on the west side of Highway 25. The Densons are seeking a conditional use permit for a manufactured home that was placed on this property. Their grandson moved a new 16-by-82 manufactured home there. It's an 8.50 acre parcel that's zoned C-2. That's an aerial view. That's a view of the manufactured home. This property has been used as a deer camp since 1983 and is still being used that way today. There are numerous campers, deer hunting sheds on the property. And B. Summers really just comes in off of 25, pretty much, on the west side and ends.
Yeah, I wanna, I wanna talk about this just for a second. First off, this is kinda, the situation that happened here was kind of a misunderstanding on a few things. The Densons, they've lived in the reservoir for a long time. It's a great family. It's a great group of people. And it's been a deer camp, like Renee said, for a long time. The property, when they bought it back in 82, 83 timeframe, didn't have any zoning. So they were able to have their deer camps and things that were at that location at that time. So when they did it, they gave some, a section or a piece of it to allow their grandson to put them over a home there. Didn't realize the zoning throughout the 2004, 2005 timeframe changed it to commercial. So it's kinda been a big misunderstanding as far as the trailer and all getting into that location. So what I'm trying to do is clean this up and get a situation for them to be able to keep that mobile home there. Craig, I know you and I have talked about some different type of things we wanna put into there. And if you can maybe talk me through some of the ways we need to get that happening to help these guys out.
So this discussion will be in anticipation that it's gonna get set for hearing, but we wanna get good information on the table before we actually do that. Since it's C-2, is that Renee?
Yes, sir.
Since it's C-2, you've got, we've got to go through the conditional use process to have a residence put there to begin with. All right, there's that. The second issue, of course, and Daniel hadn't mentioned this yet, I think he was planning to, is that we have an ordinance that requires a permit to locate a mobile home regardless. And that wasn't done here. The, apparently, the, either the seller or the installer, or both of them, are from out of the area and were not familiar with our ordinance. You know, we don't, we don't have as many of these situations now that we've had our ordinance in place for a while 'cause most of the local folks that are in the mobile home business are familiar with our ordinance. And most of the installers are familiar with our ordinance. And so it's just not become, it hasn't become an issue recently. But every once in a while, we'll get somebody from out of the area that doesn't know about our ordinance. So this, this home was located without authority to locate it there. That needs to be, probably needs to be dealt with in some fashion, as a part of this process. So some conditions that might make sense here would be to allow the placement of the home for some period of time. And then, it needs to go after a period of time. Some restrictions that would not allow it to be rented, not allow it to be transferred to a third party. Those are some ideas that you might want to consider as a part of this process. It is C-2, so it's, the idea behind that zoning would be that its location that close to Highway 25 suggests that the highest and best use of that property is eventually gonna end up being a commercial use. So that was the idea behind the original zoning to begin with, the location proximity to 25.
Yeah, let's hit those two areas you just talked about just for a second. On some of the things, Shannon, on the conditional use side, that we would want to put out there for, would be as long, in my mind, I'm gonna see what y'all's thoughts on this is, as long as he's in that residence, he doesn't rent it out, doesn't sell to anybody else, if he moves out, then the trailer would be moved and relocated somewhere else. Are y'all good with that side of that? You guys on that? So that, well, he can stay in there as long... This has been, the problem with, how this all happened was is the Densons just didn't realize the zoning area that had taken place for it. And plus, they made the assumption that, hey, I've got campers and all here now 'cause it's a deer camp, I can put a trailer on the same side of it. So by no ill intention did the Densons make this mistake. It just happened by consequence of what all was around it and that it happened. But what was the other one we talked about, Slay?
The ordinance with respect to a permit being required to locate a mobile unit in the county, period. We've got that, that ordinance has been in place now, how long, Renee? Seven, six, seven years now?
I can't remember.
I think that's about right.
Yeah, so...
In that neighborhood, anyway, we've had that ordinance in place. And so what that ordinance, the penalty provisions in that ordinance are, there's a monetary fine associated with it. There's, there's the ability of the board, should it choose to do so, to actually require whoever brought it in to actually take it out and then relocate it. It's kind of draconian. That's why most of the folks around here know about it and don't violate it because it's pretty stiff if you...
Can we issue the fine to the company that sold them the trailer?
Well, we can because the ordinance actually applies to the owner of the property, the owner of the mobile home, the seller of the mobile home, and the installer of the mobile home. All of those are potential violators.
Okay.
So the board could choose, it can make the decision, the violation here is on the part of either the seller or the installer or both, and pursue the violation directly there, if you want to do that.
I know, I know I wanna have conversations on the seller or the people that sold this thing, that they should've known the regulations for Rankin County, if they're gonna be selling or moving or transferring a mobile home to our location.
That's right.
Then they should be aware of our regulations for that.
Yes.
But what I'd like to do today is, is set the public hearing for the 15th, is that right?
Yes.
So I'll make a motion to set the public hearing on that. And then, if y'all are okay with those conditions, as far as just your son, Shannon, living in it until that point, no renting it out, you know, if he sells it or whatever, move it off the property, and then we'll go from that point there, if y'all are good with that. And we'll talk about that more on the public hearing. We'll make that into a motion to approve it or disapprove it at that point on the 15th. But we'll set that public, I mean, I'll make a motion to set the public hearing on the 15th.
All right. Motion by Daniel? Second. Seconded by Jared. Any discussion? All the papers say aye?
Aye.
And we'll take up the rest of the details on the 15th, so it should be good. Yeah, if you don't mind, I'd appreciate it. Thanks for coming out today. Sorry for standing in the hall out there.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Denson, good to see you.
All right, that's it. We are moving on to site plan, our public meeting.
Do you want me to start? Okay, so Daniel Sistrunk is seeking the site plan architectural review. It's for Bibbs Road, property on Bibbs Road. This property is located at the end of Bibbs Road. Mr. Sistrunk was approved in March of 2019 for a wedding and events venue. It's a 20-acre parcel. It's zoned A-1. It's an aerial view of that property. That's just the survey showing his 20-acre parcel. And then, this is the only PDF we had that actually shows the placement of the building. It'll be located here. Shows detention here, and here, parking out here. His parking is gonna be crushed asphalt. He will have the hard surface handicap parking. Tim has reviewed the drainage plans and he had no comments on that. That's a rendering of what the building will look like. It's gonna be a 3,000-square-foot building constructed from rough-cut lumber. That's the elevations. And these are views of that property. So he's here. If y'all have any questions?
If I can point one thing out, Brad, obviously, it's in Brad's district. Some time ago, Mr. Sistrunk and I and Renee and some others, and Bob Mara at the time, your predecessor, met and talked about the condition of Bibbs Road and that there was no present intent whatsoever on the part of the county to do anything with Bibbs Road, to condition it, to bring it up to any sort of standard. And I think Mr. Sistrunk understood that. And since he's here today, I just wanna make it clear on the record that this would be a venue that could potentially attract a good bit of traffic. And so you saw the parking spaces that are being planned. The size of the building suggests that there's probably some traffic. And I just wanna make it clear while he's here that, as I appreciate it, there still is no present intention on the part of the board to do anything with respect to Bibbs Road. And so Mr. Sistrunk is aware of that and he's trying to create a business here. But it needs to be clearly understood, if there's any issue with respect to access via Bibbs, Mr. Sistrunk may have to be dealing with that issue himself, if it affects his business. So I wanted to make that clear on the record, even before the public hearing. And I'll probably restate this, that we have the hearing, well, we won't have a hearing. This is site plan architectural review, right? So I'm making it clear on the record now, then, that there's no present intention on the part of the county to do anything to improve Bibbs Road.
So we're here just to...
It's just site plan architectural review, Brad. And if you guys are okay with what you've seen, your staff can administrate that internally. There won't be a public hearing.
Well, that's right. If y'all are okay, you just need to prove it.
Motion by Brad, seconded by Jared. Any discussion? All the papers say aye?
Aye.
All right. So the nuisance property is in compliance, and so it's been removed. But I did have some proposed zoning amendments. And I wondered if y'all had maybe had an opportunity to look at that.
Daniel?
Proposed zoning text amendments.
No. When did you send that to me?
A week or so ago. But I gave you a copy of them today. It was just for discussion.
What do you want me to do?
Sir?
What is it you want me to change?
It's about 11 items.
Oh, wow.
So mainly, well, some of it is I wanted to add some wording to some of the existing definitions, but I also wanted to add some definitions. One, as far as a recreational vehicle or an RV, we didn't have a definition for that. So I would like to add the definition that you see there for that. And then also, I want to add in the general regulations a place where they would be allowed. That's on page two. It would be in a manufactured home park, MHP zoning. You could have one there.
Is this what the tiny houses would fall under?
Well, now, a tiny home, if it was site-built to building codes...
I think they're on wheels, aren't they?
Well, some are. Some could be constructed, you know, a site-built home. Those would be built to building codes. We don't have anything that would prohibit that. But now, yes, the ones that are mobile, that's how we view those as like a camper RV-type thing.
So they won't start putting up tiny homes to live in?
No, I'm just saying, if they did, we've had a few calls. Yeah, we've had a few calls, and if they're a site-built home, we don't, we don't have anything that would prohibit it.
Like, put them live in it?
Yeah. I'm talking about, they wanna do subdivision. Yeah, people wanna do subdivisions like that.
Yep. We don't need that.
You know?
I knew of one with that, big grandfather. You know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, I think so.
Well, I don't know if it's still on wheels, but it's a law cabin style. You know the one I'm talking about.
Yes, yes, yes.
Well, now, we're gonna be opening up for like what you said.
This is just for RVs.
Okay.
It's just for RVs. It was just a definition to define what we...
Start, Renee.
I'm sorry.
See what you started?
It's just for discussion. We would like to, you know, have something to fall back on for the recreational vehicles. And before, the only wording that was in there was for a transient trailer. And it had in there that it could be there for 180 days within a period of one year. But, you know, it didn't say that they couldn't just move it down the street and come right back. So we want to remove that, about the 180 days, and add the recreational vehicle definition. And then, where they could go, they would be allowed in the MHP zone, which would be a manufactured home park that's set up for that use.
And they just set up and live there for...
Well, they have, they have spots there. The definition said, you know, for living, sleeping, cooking.
I have that problem a good bit in one of my areas where they'll move in them.
Yeah, well, they don't need to be.
Move them in and move out.
Well, the trailer or something might burn and they move in a little RV and try and live in it here on that.
I mean, that what you're saying, they gonna be able to do?
No. Where currently are the MHP?
All right, so Country Meadows is an example where they have some in the older section, where they have some RV, what do you call them?
Old Fannin Road.
Yeah, Alpine Mobile Home Park. I'm not sure about that Cox, but I'd have to check his zoning and make sure.
What is Vernon Jones?
That's his.
Oh, okay. I got you.
Is it Mr. Gibson?
Yeah, he is here, yeah.
So those are places right now where we know they are and people are...
Yeah, he's got 8260 of them in there.
Really?
Yeah.
Well, it's more like a, sort of park-type build to start with.
Is this like Timberlake?
Yeah, that's a little different, I guess.
So what Renee is telling you is that if it's classified as an RV, it will have to go in a specifically zoned area, MHP. To live in. To be a residence, to be a...
To use it that way.
Fixure, okay? So it's, instead of wishy-washy, what does our regulation say about this? It's specific now. It says, if it's an RV, it's got to go here. It can't go there. So this is a, this is a better regulation, a better way to regulate them. And all tiny houses that have, that are mobile are classified as RVs, so they can fall into this definition.
And so the next thing that we wanted to add, or possibly, just, you know, get your thoughts on it, rural subdivision definition. And you can see it there. And what we thought we would do is make it a conditional use in the agricultural zones. So when these things came, they wouldn't have to rezone the property and we'd have a little area of what appears to be spot zoning in the midst of a bunch of agricultural land. And so we defined it, and then we were gonna add it, like I said, as a conditional use in the agricultural zones. That means they would come before the board. You know, you could set certain conditions if you wanted to on those things. And we also added a requirement for a minimum lot width. Right now, there are no minimum dimensional requirements for that. So we added a 100-foot minimum lot width and a front yard setback of 30 feet.
That's not much of a lot for a rural subdivision.
Well, if you see the definition, it says 10 lots that are 10 acres in size or greater.
It'd be real lot, not real...
Yes. So the restriction is not more than 10 lots. All lots have to be at least 10 acres.
10 acres apiece.
Yeah, I didn't see the 10-acre part.
See that?
That's in the definition.
Not more than 10. All of them at least... All of them at least ten acres.
Now, what are we doing in a house?
The purpose for this suggestion was to get around the issue that we always have, which is that we don't allow subdivisions in ag zone. And you guys were constantly being confronted with, I'm just trying to split my piece into three pieces. Why are you, why are you calling that a subdivision? Well, because our development ordinance specifies that as a subdivision. And we don't allow subdivisions in ag zone. So to let that happen, we had to rezone that. Well, that's a public hearing, public notice, stirring everybody up. What's going on? Why are you changing all this ag property? This would allow for that small, large lot development that has public road frontage. That's another key consideration.
Well, as we address the key.
Has public road frontage for every lot, okay? Meets the minimum specifications. What that will get is the privilege or the ability to go ahead and split that property up without having to go through a rezoning. It would be a conditional use in the ag zone.
The key, the deal there is the fact it has road frontage.
Yes, sir. That is a key consideration.
That's what limits a lot.
And the reason that we have a development ordinance is that we don't want multi-lot developments that are accessed by glorified driveways that no first responder vehicle can get down. Cause they're not maintained, they're not wide enough, they're not stable enough. You can't put an eighty thousand pound fire truck down a ten-foot halfway gravel driveway that's serving six hours. The development would have to have public road frontage. And the idea behind it, we're gonna still have to face these issues, by the way. But if they, if they want to develop something like this, but they want to develop more than ten lots, that's fine. It'll just be developed like a regular subdivision. If they want to develop the area, but they want to get off of public road frontage, that's fine. As long as your access meets our county specifications.
I still don't see why we do that at all. I mean, it's not good to make people install a private drive to county specs. Cause I mean, it's a private road and I don't see where it's really our call if they can get a fire truck down there. You know, I mean, we did...
It's county's responsibility, isn't it?
It's not really the call of the property owners, you know, the forty-year-old that's standing there saying, I can take care of myself. That's fine. Until he sells four houses and you've got eight kids, the kids don't get a vote. You got to get first response into those houses. You gotta go.
I think just us getting involved in that is overreaching. Cause that does keep people from being able to sell their property. You know, and being able to build in a rural setting.
Well, okay, a situation like, you know, more than one. They got to build a half-mile private drive slash road, whatever, back to get to the property that they want. They got like, I don't know, say a hundred acres. They want to sell fifty acres to somebody, forty acres.
Yeah.
Alright, then that guy, more than likely, he's gonna want to split that forty up. He goes to say, he's going in with a forty, but then later he's gonna want to split that up and maybe build his daughter or buddy buy lots there. How do we handle that part? I'm with you. I understand what you're saying, but that's the situation. I don't know how to handle that part. You can't say, okay, you're buying forty, you can't ever sell anything off of it. And I don't know how to handle that part. You got a half-mile road of just a gravel, basically driveway getting back to it. But then they start building, in time, it's gonna happen, three or four more houses on that one forty-acre lot. So how do we, I don't know how to regulate that.
I think it's all gonna be private ownership.
Just let them...
That's really true. Even though we make them do this upfront, we don't go back and check it and make sure they keep it up to our standards, you know? And it's still, even though they bring it up to our standards, it's still gonna fall into maintenance.
Yeah. I mean, I'm alright with what you're saying. I don't worry. I just worry about, like I said, the guy then comes in there and says, I'm gonna split it up into five-acre lots. I'm keeping my five acres and I'm selling five-acre lots of this forty acres. And then you got really a little mini subdivision for sure then.
I think our process where on the front end, we address a lot of these issues that you're talking about, Jay. We state clearly on the record, it's private. It will stay private. It has to be privately maintained. The county is not going to maintain this. And you can't run to the school district and get it mysteriously placed on the school bus turnaround list so we have to maintain it that way? You can't do all that documentation and put it in place. That's an effective way to handle it. We also add in there, if you get ready to subdivide this further, add more houses than what we know about right now. If you get ready to subdivide it further, you gotta come back to the board and get permission to subdivide it further. And that's where you guys would have the opportunity to say, we let you put five in there. If you're gonna do five more, you gotta get this road upstanding. Then you can put your five more.
Well, that's where the problem is. You gonna make this guy, the guy really sold the land that had, may still have some rights to that road, obviously, cause it goes through his property. Then you got the one that bought the land, so you'd have the two of them then saying, okay, we're gonna have to bring it back up. Well, one saying, I don't, no.
I don't need it.
I don't need to bring it back up. I just made it for you to get to your home, you bring it up. And you're talking about, you know, two, three hundred thousand dollars or more, maybe. I mean, I'm kinda like, Jay, maybe, it's their problem, it's forever gonna be their problem. And down the road, it is a problem, cause we've seen it, you know?
Yes.
Man, what we do about all these potholes and all this washing out? It's your road.
I give you Indian mound as exhibit A of why you need a plan, you need a process. And if there is a standard for road construction, it needs to be followed. And you need to have the developer acknowledge, if I'm gonna develop this property, it's going to have to meet access standards.
Well, I get that if you're gonna develop it, yeah.
Well, I mean, it senses what they're doing when they got a hundred acres back there. We're gonna, we're gonna sell it off block and block at a time. So we're basically developing it and then, then, uh, you go by, like you said, thirty acres and you split it up three times or more. So basically, you have that. So we're gonna just say, you build a glorified gravel driveway and then whatever you do off of that's gonna, I mean, is that the kinda way we're gonna go? But I got some that are sitting there wanting that.
I don't know. I just think that we overreach with that.
Well, that's where I'm trying to come up with something to help them. I feel for them. I've got a hundred and plus acres back there and I can't sell it. Because I can't build, I can't afford to build a...
Yeah, a road.
A half-million dollar road to the county standard. Now, if we could, we could maybe lessen our standard as far as a driveway slash road. Because now, we have some right now, and I went down the other day and set a bridge at one. I don't think you could get any emergency vehicle down that thing. It was barely wide enough for me to get that big truck down.
You know, it's so secret that we have inherited a lot of substandard roads over time. As county, we've got them all over the county. They populate most of the districts that I'm looking at. So you guys are familiar with them. But, so we know how to deal with substandard roads that we've already inherited. But I'm trying to fix that. What we're trying to do is to deal with future development and provide, this is an effort to provide some accommodation to the situation where maybe it's a family that is wanting to break up the property among family members. This is a way to accommodate that without triggering a mandatory rezoning requirement. That if we can eliminate the need for the rezoning, then most of what we need to deal with can be handled internally and we don't have to do the public hearing, public notice and get everybody stirred up.
Well, a lot of times those, I mean, Craig, that family member builds a house.
Part of our definition does say that the rural subdivisions may be exempt from some of the requirements of the Rankin County subdivision regulations determined through site plan review. So, you know, y'all could address that during the site plan review.
I think we do a pretty good job of it right now. I mean, we're handling it that way. And if we just open the door, I think we're gonna get flooded with a lot of stuff that we don't want and our people out in the neighborhood don't want.
Well, you got situations like we're talking about. We're talking about how to handle that.
This says eighteen hundred square foot minimum.
I don't, let's see that.
But it says also that that could be more based on the site plan review. That would be up to y'all.
The hundred-foot minimum frontage, I like more than that. And the thirty-foot is, on a county road, is really close.
There is, and most people wouldn't do that if they had a large lot, you wouldn't think.
But these are ten acres, so...
That's right. So you wouldn't think, they would exceed that, you would think.
Let me have a look.
So the idea is, was to be able to pick up some properties, Steve, that are oriented narrow indeed.
I guarantee you, ten-acre lot that's a hundred-foot wide would get about Yazoo County from here.
Yeah, you're right.
Yes, understood. So there's lots of moving parts here and trying to, trying to get a happy meeting in there in regulations was just a thought process. This definitely would be a way to overcome what has been a fairly consistent hurdle for us, which is the rezoning requirement. You guys may not want to. You may say, you know what, make them go through the rezoning. If the, if the residents in the area don't want, they have an opportunity to come and talk about it.
Well, Lord, that sure work down there in Brass District.
Yes, John Shaw.
Yeah, those folks sure...
Shut that thing down, didn't it?
Yeah, yes.
But I did, I still am back to that, the answer to the situation I'm talking about. The situation's more than one. Now, Steve, I think, Steve, you got some of them, we've talked about it. I don't know the, whether you just let them build a private road. But you talking about family members, they use that a lot. I was building a family member, family member. Well, some of them don't care later down the road if that family member needs to move, they sell that.
That's right.
No, I would.
Yes.
But some of them don't care. And so then you got, it changes hands.
Our current process that we use where we actually burden the properties with restrictive covenants that they go in the record, that keeps everybody straight. Nobody can argue later. I didn't know anything about y'all's arrangement with this prior owner.
Right.
It's in the records. And so I, I think our current process protects the board and taxpayers against situations where development activity gets out from under us without us knowing what's going on. Our current situation can address that. This is just a recurring theme that we get, which is, why am I being forced to rezone this property as a part of subdividing it when I'm not creating a subdivision? That's a recurring problem.
Yeah.
And it's difficult to explain.
It really is. So this...
Yeah, and you end up with a zoning map I played that has a lot of ag. And then you got a twenty, this RE one eight, and a forty that's RE one eight. And they're just little pockets here and there. And it doesn't make good sense from a zoning perspective when you look at your map. You see all that ag with those little pops like that?
Yeah.
That's, that starts looking like spot zoning.
Can you just take action today concerning?
No, it was just for discussion. There's a few other things on here too, though, that, um, if y'all want me just move on quickly through that.
Sure.
For screening, relative to abutting properties, the architectural screening. Right now, it says that the screen fence can be of wood, masonry, stone, concrete, or metal. And I'm not sure that we would want the metal, so I was just gonna remove that.
What number you on?
Two, Article Four, General Regulation, Section four oh four. The buffer yards and screening standards, just to remove the word metal unless y'all are in favor of having metal screening or fence. It's up to y'all, but... That's a suggestion.
What is this bucket for, from around, surrounding property?
Uh, screening, relative to abutting properties, mhm.
Yeah, I would not move metal.
Alright, you're done.
So wait, just get back to the top of the, the eighteen hundred square foot minimum. We don't have minimums anywhere else, so why would we have that here?
Well, that's just part of the definition, if y'all want it that way. Or if you, I guess we could remove that and just say it would be up to site plan approval.
Yeah, I think that would be better.
Historically, this board has taken the position, we don't set minimums. We look at what's around the property and declare a minimum on a case-by-case basis. I think that's been an effective way for us to use that. We have consistently said as legal counsel. There are arguments that would suggest that that could be considered arbitrary, right? And potentially capricious, both of which would be a basis to overturn a decision that the board makes. So we just put that out there. If you don't have specific documented requirements, there is an issue of notice and an issue of potential arbitrariness on the part of the board that would have to be dealt with. As long as y'all understand that, it's okay. We've seemed to handle that okay.
We've managed five years so far, or a lot of years.
Sixteen years.
Yeah. Well, I mean, just recently is when Dave tried to get in, stepped in there a few years ago.
Renee, should we tell him that Dave helped us with this?
Oh, yes, he did. He did.
He's trying to backdoor you, yeah.
I see that.
In his defense, I'll tell you this, we had this conversation. What we have seen is that the development pressure out in the rural areas has been markedly beyond eighteen hundred square feet. They're building twenty-five, twenty-seven, three thousand plus square feet.
So then there's no reason to put that in there.
Generally speaking...
The only thing that in there I like is if you did, if somebody did develop, say, six of them and they still had forty more acres or whatever and wanted to sell another one. And a person comes in and says, I'm gonna build a thousand-square-foot home. And we don't have any regulations that say, no, you can't.
Yeah.
Because, but we got these twenty-five hundred and three thousand square foot homes all the way around it and...
But if they're in an area that had the twelve hundred square foot homes, that might be... But I see what you're saying. I agree with what you're saying. You got these big homes, and he's gonna, well, I'm just gonna build this little house.
Well, what about somebody coming putting a trailer in?
Yeah, Steve's example, a classic example of what could happen if a developer, who's not really in the development business, but has a hundred acres and comes in and puts six in place, but he's reserved thirty acres left. And he bothered, he went ahead and got the covenants put in place on those six that he developed, but he forgot that he needed to extend those covenants over. Then there's not private covenants to protect those six homeowners. There's just nothing there. So this would be a backstop.
What, what addresses mobile homes in here?
Well, our definition says that they will have to have restrictive covenants recorded on file with the Chancery Clerk of Rankin County. You know, unless they had deed restrictions, nothing would. We didn't specifically set out...
Of eighteen hundred, could we have one more word that said, something to do with the house? Because there's eighteen...
Well, it says it, well...
There's eighteen hundred and fifty square foot tract.
Yeah, we can tweak the language that would incorporate what is a part of a rural subdivision, which would exclude, uh, non-stick-built.
That's a situation you kinda ran into, yeah.
Or build on site.
And, and I don't, I don't have a problem. We proved some today. If somebody's out there and they've got five or ten acres of land and they wanna put double wide and it's nice and, that's, that's fine. But when we're having a subdivision that we're regulating what size houses and lots and the amenities that they would wanna have, then you can... Then you can, I think it can screw the whole thing up if you don't protect.
It's pretty narrowly defined. I mean, it's gotta be not more than ten lots, at least ten acres a piece, but it's narrowly defined. We're not telling people that they have to develop like that. It's just if they wanna fall into this classification and not have to go rezoning. This is your requirement, and you can set minimums. Kind of like the idea of saying, we'll set our minimum on a case by case.
Right, but also as a conditional use permit, they can specify no manufactured homes, site-built only. You could make that part of the conditions of your approval. Cause those are looked at, you know, on compatibility with surrounding properties and things like that, so.
On the, uh, on the width of the lot, is that what we have for the subdivisions, a hundred foot?
Well.
Not in the subdivision.
You know, the, the largest lot we have is an acre minimum lot size, and that's like RE one, RE one A. They set the minimum lot width at a hundred feet. Uh, the Ag Zones have never had any, uh, dimensional requirements. There are none. So, since we were working on a definition, we thought it would be best to include something. You know, if you want it bigger, I guess.
With what we normally use. RE one, RE one eight, minimum width, hundred feet. So it, it lines up with what we established as our, does it make sense to say our maximum minimum? Our, our largest minimum is a hundred feet.
So we not voting on this today, so let's move on.
All right, so we talked about the metal for screening. Uh, the next thing is where the ordinance addresses the pods or portable storage units. It came to light this week on something we were working on. Uh, it says that pot, pods aren't regulated, the placement or the use in a residential estate, which would be RE one. Um, so if it's not regulated there, uh, I don't see why it should be regulated in RE one A, the mixed district, or the Ag Zone. So I just wanted to add those just for clarification and, you know, to make it clear that you couldn't have it there either. I mean, that it wouldn't be regulated there, they could have it there. Um, so on the top of the second page is what we've already talked about for the RVs, where it would be allowed, which would be in a mobile home park. Uh, we talked about three and four, where if the rural subdivisions would be added as a conditional use in the Ag Zones. And then five, six, seven, and eight. Uh, this also has come up on several occasions. Uh, I had a call from somebody who wanted to place a modular home in an RE one zone, and it's not allowed in the RE one. It would be in RE one A as a conditional use. So, he sent me a rendering of what he's looking at. And, uh, you know, modular homes are built to the building code that's adopted. And so, uh, the fire marshal reviews those plans. They're also built in a controlled environment in a factory. And so, that's his example of what his would look like.
That's a modular home.
That's a modular home.
I can't see why you wouldn't go along with that.
That's what he wants to build, and he said, you know, the area where he wants to place it, it will be nicer than most of what's already there. But, um, so I wondered if you would be, um, in favor maybe of adding that as a conditional use in any residential zone. That would still give you control. They have to come before you for approval.
Case by case.
That's right.
Yeah, it's kind of hard turning that down.
And it passes everything.
It, it would be built to building code because the fire marshal reviews those plans before it's ever built, to make sure it conforms to the current building code that's adopted.
Jim Walker Home. Modular Homes. Who's, who's doing that now? You see them on TV sometimes.
Durant.
Durant, yeah.
Durant, Durant. They're the ones building it, Rogers?
Durant does site-built.
Oh, they do?
Yeah.
I thought so. That's what I said, now.
I mean, most of these homes come through the manufactured home dealers, but they are modular. They're not manufactured homes. The manufactured homes have a HUD sticker on them. They're built to HUD standards. Modulars, before we give a permit, they have to have sealed plans, uh, reviewed by the fire marshal's office. They send a letter stating they've reviewed them and they comply to the code. Uh, then they're built and, you know, they, they come out to the lot and they just put the sections together.
Are they built on a slab?
Most of them are.
They can be on a permit, you know, they have at least a, a perimeter footing.
The ones that we're seeing are built on slab.
Isn't there a bunch of those, uh, there around Greenfield, back in there?
Cedar Ridge.
Cedar Ridge.
Had some, uh, that Terry Jenkins had done, and there's some up off of.
One of my sons worked for a company that set them with Crane.
Four seventy-one. Brooks Estates, they had Terry Jenkins, uh, put some out there as well, and they do look like houses. They're rigged up.
He said, he said, I remember, he worked for Crane Company, they, they set them. He said it was amazing that Brett bought them out there and he set those big. And he said, he said, they just went right together. But he said, they look like a real house when it's all done. He, he was impressed and surprised at how they shipped them in there.
I don't know about builders, sir.
Huh?
I don't know.
And I know, um, City of Clinton allows them as a conditional use, and there's city limits in every residential zone, but it, you know, they still have to come before you. Neighbors, if they were opposed, would still have an opportunity to weigh in if they had any issues.
I'm, I'm, I think I'm okay with that. If, if, is it, I mean, they're gonna present what they're gonna put up there.
Yeah, a rendering or something, a picture like that.
Yeah.
They'd have to bring something showing you what they were proposing.
It's kind of hard to tell somebody no when that looks just like a.
We can do it with every one of them having to have a conditional use where we get to look at.
That's right.
Yeah.
All right, and then the last thing is, um, in the C two and the C three. Um, right now, bars are a conditional use in the C three zone. Um, the only area where you could have liquor is in the resort area up off of Old Fanning, Spillway Road and that area. Ours, the only zoning that, that, that's there is C two, so I would like to move that.
I thought we were industrial.
Sir?
I thought industrial is where you could have liquor stores.
I'm saying bars. No, but liquor stores are allowed as a conditional use in the C two already. Liquor stores are. I'm talking about bars. But, uh, I had a call on that as well. So the only place it actually could go in the county right now is in that resort area, and all the zoning there is C two. So, I was thinking that we would move it to a conditional use in the C two. But that's, because that's the only place it, it could possibly go. So.
And if we do it as a conditional use, then I think we backdoor at that point the ability that we don't currently have to actually regulate what would be in the resort status. Not to bore you with a lot of details, but once, all the resort determinations are done at the state mall, at the state level, that's not a local determination. It's not at the state level. So once it gets that resort status classification, it's controlled by ABC and they set the regulations. We can't even tell them when they can be open and when they can close. If we, you, the only control that we have at the moment is zoning. Right? Even though it's classified as resort, they don't meet our zoning requirement, and that's been in place. And is not considered to be a regulation of the establishment. It's not even there. It didn't clear zoning. So, this would be a way, by saying it's a conditional use in C two, it would allow us to set conditions when we grant the zoning conditional use. And set conditions like no outside entertainment. Uh, have to shut down at eleven o'clock. That type of regulation, that would otherwise be off limits to us, we could use through, we could backdoor it through the condition of use.
I don't, I don't, I don't know. I mean, this is not gonna have an effect that it'll make it easier for people to have a bar on every corner. I mean, this is only after they've been approved through the state and that kind of thing, we could then narrow down what they can do? Is that what I'm hearing?
That's kind of what you're saying.
I don't, I don't wanna do anything that would.
Hang on, before we get down. Before we get down there too far, let's think outside the box here, and the day that resort status goes away. And now we're back to where we were prior to resort status. I didn't even know we allow, I, I used to, we only allow liquor stores in, in industrial.
It's in the zone and as a conditional use in C two. I don't know how long, I, I could look back and see if it's been that way, but it's been that way since I've been here.
Well, I think we may need to change that. As he is.
So you prefer to move the, uh, liquor stores maybe to C three?
I think so.
As a conditional use, leave bars as a conditional use? In C three?
C three is outside storage.
State property?
C three could have some stuff outside, yeah. It's more, it's a more higher, uh, intensity. Like heavy equipment, things like that. You could have some of those type things. Maybe as a conditional use.
I can't imagine, let's let you go.
I don't know. I, I think with all this, this change coming up, so. I, I think we need to get a lot of thought to it. Let the sheriff weigh you into on, on some of our enforcement, so.
I tell you first, I'm against bars, and I probably lose votes over that. The first day one opened up on Royal Family County. A man went to ICU, the University Medical Center, he got the fight up there. I mean, it's constantly calls at the bars that would do that right now. I, I don't think people are incandescent. They, they want a nice place to take the kids and everything. We don't need bars here.
Yeah.
Or liquor.
Yeah, well, I think we need to.
I agree.
Have them in locations, so we're gonna have to set them up somewhere, you know.
I want it far enough from my house that people don't recognize me when I. That was a joke.
Cause I think.
Okay, so you want it moved to, you, so do away with this and then just move them all, both to conditional use in a, in a C, C three?
Or industrial outright.
What, why, why do you call ahead of the horse? Why ain't you just getting around?
Yeah.
So, let's just say where there's resort status now, if there was a restaurant there that already had a bar area in there. They can be selling the alcohol now, uh, by the glass, you know.
They definitely do. We do a couple of bars.
So, you know, uh, that was the only thought tonight, and the resort status area is the only place they could really locate, but that's fine.
And we do what we can to to, to impress some level of regulation as far as we can, and we haven't been really challenged on it. But, the, the classification of resort status really ties our hands as, as far as, you know, real regulation. And you, you know, uh, up there, especially close to residential subdivision developments, where you've got, um, you've got dense subdivision development immediately adjacent to an area where there is outdoor entertainment. Right? Uh, so that's a friction point that we have to deal with, and we, we do what we can to try and regulate that to a degree. But if we get challenged on it, we're gonna, we're gonna, it's gonna be some rough settling for us. So, if resort status does in fact go away, then the, the good part about that is that it puts regulation you know, the, the right kind of regulation back in your hands to address issues of timeframes. Open, close, outdoor versus indoor. You know, being outside of the boundaries of the area with an open container. That type of regulation is what I'm talking about, where, right now, that's kind of a no man's land.
What, well. Okay, if the resort status goes away, since we're talking in circles here, does that mean the cities won't have any control?
Well, right now, when we're talking about it, the only reason for a resort status classification is that it is in fact incorporated.
It's in the county. Resorts, there's no resort status in the cities.
No, I'm not. I was backdooring to ask if this legislation changes things, will it change, affect the cities?
Yeah. I mean, they'll be able to, they'll be, they'll do their own.
They're still doing their own.
I know, but I'm saying, they, they will, they can.
For the most part, they.
Take away the, uh, whatever, we talked about.
There's gonna be more people, more people having access to it.
And the, and the, the way that the state legislature has been doing this is that when they take the cuffs off of cities. They give them specifically in statute the ability to regulate themselves. They don't do that for us. It's not in statute.
I guess.
So what are you wanting to do in the industrial zone, Dave?
Yeah.
Explain it to me again.
If and when it does happen, that's where liquor stores can be placed.
Only in something zoned industrial?
Yeah.
Not commercial?
Right.
We wouldn't leave it in commercial as well, just to have it as a conditional?
I don't know, man. You think, you do commercial, we got commercial everywhere.
But how, I, I guess my question is.
Your C three, though, is mainly along like twenty-five, uh, forty-nine, um, places like that. There is some of, oh, four seventy-one.
So they can put up any gas station they want.
Are they zoned for that?
Well, it's a C three.
I'm talking about as it is today. If we don't do nothing.
Well, she just told me we're having a C two. I didn't realize that.
As a conditional use in the C two.
Do you, your thoughts on moving just the industrial zone?
I know that this is way back then, we were looking at doing it years ago, you know, and the reason why we stopped was um, we couldn't control where they go, you know, that was all up to our ABC, and it still is. So, and we have a, I know we have legislators that are working to try to get that worked around, so. But, I don't know, it's food for thought, because I think it's coming.
I, I mean, I wanna think about it as far as the commercial or industrial side of it, whether it's C two, C three.
Yeah, I know you, we don't want them allowed everywhere, every street corner.
That's what's going, that's, that's, I agree with you. That's what my question was about the cities. We won't have any control of the cities.
Probably got more there.
Probably more in Pearl anyway.
Probably more in Pearl, anywhere, I think.
Well.
Industrial zone?
See where you.
Oh, God.
That's what Jay wanted, just to be able to sell in his district.
Jake's house is zoned industrial, I think.
Well, um.
Well, yeah, I remember, this is all unincorporated areas too, so.
I, I might like to ask some more.
Highway eighty just outside the city limits.
Yeah, no, we're not, there's really a lot to think about there.
C three, I definitely don't like them in C two. C three would be better, but I definitely don't like them in C two.
All right, we can move it.
That means any.
Right.
Any business at all. Go to your doctor's office, go right next door, get you some liquors, you know.
The main dick coming out of there.
But just only dentist office.
Yeah, or your CPA. I don't know, something to get some thought to, for sure.
All right, and then just the last thing on there, number eleven, that's just to clean that up. That's a, just a typo. It was worded incorrectly.
So you wanting to do, take action on some of this stuff in May or June or? In our term?
Yeah.
Yes, I would like to, and, uh, you know, we can tweak it or take some out. Uh, that's up to y'all, what y'all are comfortable with. I'll change it however y'all want me to.
I like the ten lot, ten acre, uh, I mean, ten is a little bigger than I would have probably said five. Uh, with the ability to expand maybe down, you know, but that has been, we've been doing this. And it's just been, uh, putting it together as we've gone and I think it gives us some, uh, guidance that we can show that this is.
I, I agree. I like that. I just wish we need to, we need, we've got to think of something to help with other situations, yeah.
The, yeah, these are all basin county roads.
Right, these are easy.
The other thing is, when we let them develop that road as private. We're gonna hear about it. I mean, we may not, but the next people, when they get to where they can't maintain that road. Then they're gonna start yapping about it being turned over to the county. And and it never was put in a foundation that would really hold a road, so we have to go back from zero. I, I might, would say that I'd be okay if they built a gravel road.
To a foundation of county status.
A gravel up to whatever, ten of them, but I've got people that live on gravel roads and all I hear is, how come y'all didn't pave my road? And they've been, you know, so it's, it's hard. And they've been, you know, so it's, it's hard.
Think about too, when they sell those lots is make sure that there is, they don't sell the right of way, I mean, the road.
Oh, they, yeah, they'd have to have.
They have to have easement.
We're trying now to address the whole easement issue on the front end as best we can. Uh, we frequently require them to have a sixty foot right of way established. Uh, just as a mental, um, and you know, obviously that doesn't mean the road has to be sixty feet wide. The right of way needs to be that big.
Well, we used to do fifty. As a lot of them have, I know, but, and, and we, we may have to honor that because I know a lot of them have a fifty foot right of way because back in the day it was fifty foot and that's all they have.
Yep.
So maybe just honor that one.
And that was it.
Could be a record long planning commission.
Yep.
Not great.
Yeah.
Pretty good.
I said this is gonna be a short meeting. I didn't know.
Sorry, I'm sorry. I hadn't seen y'all in so long.
There you go. All right.
She's just in time. We covered this, patience.
Oh, she must've been just in time.
She been watching us.
Buzzed.
Oh, okay, yes, right, that's right. Yep.
All right.
All right, so we are, uh, have a bunch adjourned?
Somebody second.
All right, question by Daniel, second by Jared, all in person, say aye. Ayes aye. All right, this time we're gonna call our four supervisors, works, uh, work session to order. Uh, public comments, we have, Mr. Franco's been patiently waiting. Good to see you. It's always interesting.
I can never, uh, say it's not. Good morning. I hope everybody's been well in my absence. I know y'all miss me.
Barb's been standing in for you.
Okay. I know y'all waiting on pins and needles for an update.
I've forgotten about it, to be honest with you.
Well, I don't wanna, I don't wanna bring up any bad greens or anything, even my name. Let me see if I can give you a brief update and then I'll be glad to answer any questions. What I want to do briefly, uh, what I handed out was on that first page is just an update of all the projects and then on the second page is the cost update, uh, of, of the projects. Uh, where we're at is up today, April thirtieth, uh, that item number one, you can see the courthouse is at twenty million, three hundred fifty-seven thousand, three forty-one, forty-five. Mister Mainer, which is completed, that's, uh, it's four million, two hundred, one thousand, oh, seventy-two point five nine, uh, which gives you roughly, uh, twenty-four and a half million dollars, twenty-four, almost six point six million. Leaving a current bond balance of four hundred forty-one thousand, five eighty-five, ninety-six. Uh, now, as far as where the courthouse is, believe it or not, there is engine site. We, I've had several long conversations with the contractor and we've been trying to stay on top of the situation the last couple of months. Uh, he's working toward mid-May to getting substantial completion. We don't think that's gonna happen. We think it's gonna be the end of May. And what substantial completion, I know Jerry's laughing. What substantial completion technically, the term, the contractual term is that they're able to use the building. That doesn't mean that every little flower's in place, but there, but that they can use the building for what was designed for and function. In other words, they can have court, they can have all the functions. That means that all the paving and everything else that's needed is there. However, typically after substantial completion is a period where they have to do punch this, in other words, touch up paint, correct little issues. We think that's gonna take, well, we think that we need to allow that for thirty days, so that would put everything at the end of June. That's when I would schedule for owner furnished furnishings to be planned, any move over during that period of time. And the reason, the contractors told us that he's, he's willing, he's flexible. He'll allow them to come in earlier. But that causes issues with who's responsible for what. If something gets nicked, is it the furniture person installing or is it the contractor, was it there? Plus, in this environment right now, it just brings a whole bunch of people on site that don't need to be there with social distancing and everything else. So I would, I would recommend that any moving or anything like that not ha, not happen till after, uh, June first. Uh, would be our recommendation. I don't know if that's feasible for the county or not, but it just avoids a lot of finger pointing on who's responsible for what. And it avoids having all these people on site at one time, which has caused a little problem with the contractor right now, just getting some of his subs on site. Uh, some of them, a couple of them have not come on site for a few weeks because somebody was diagnosed as possibly having the virus or not and, uh, but he thinks that that's all in the past and they're, they're moving forward. He doesn't see that being a problem anymore. At least that's his anticipation. Now, with, with re-roofing projects, other things we're working on, the DHS is complete, EOC is now complete. Uh, both of those projects wound up being about fifty thousand dollars each under budget. Mike can talk to you about, he was, he just told me that he's very pleased with the outcome of the EOC, uh, building. We're working on the CMRS LS. That's a more, a little bit more complicated building because we're not sure exactly all the ramifications. We have an asbestos survey going on. We've got the mechanical engineers gonna get with, uh, Mister Harold and just to look at the rooftop units, make a recommendation there. They're, they may be fine, but if they're in bad shape, the, the thing with that to do would be to, to relocate them when you're doing the roof because they need to be raised on curves. Now, they've got some interesting things, I think I've mentioned that before going on with that, and I'm just not sure. But all that will affect whatever the end price is gonna be and we'll bring back to the board our recommendations on what we find on that. Uh, whether or not, you know, the units, if they're in good shape, they just may need the curves raised.
Let me ask, this was to ask you, if the units are, are okay and they, so they're not on curves at the time, present, they're almost sitting flat?
Yeah, and that's part of the problem. You got water standing on the roof and the drains are at the high point, which I don't know why that's the case. And if you remember, they've got a sump pump on the roof, which I've never, that's my first thing I've ever seen, a sump pump on the roof.
So you could, so those same units, you could, uh, put adapters and curves for them?
Right, you can just, if they're in good shape, we would recommend raising the curve regardless.
I was gonna say do that regardless and if they're, if they're in, I mean, if they're optimal and in decent shape, I don't know why you couldn't reuse them because if they're on a curb, they're not hard to change.
Right, no, no, it's just, those units typically have like a life expectancy somewhere between fifteen and twenty years and I don't know how old they are.
Right.
So if they're, if they're fairly new, say five years, ten years younger, we probably don't want to do that right now, but if they're old, uh, because you, usually when you replace them, well, you're gonna have to have a crane and, and so you might as well get it all done at one time, uh, but, uh, but we're wait, we don't know this, Jared, we don't know the outcome of that yet. I've just now got the engineers going because of all the stuff that's going on.
This on, which, which buildings?
This is the Central Mississippi Regional Library is on the top floor and then the maintenance department.
Right up the hill?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that won't, that doesn't take a big crane. Tell me your expense is not.
It's not a big building.
No.
There's a couple of other things, like it's got a skylight that's been leaking and, you know, whether or not you want to replace it or just cover over it.
Really skylight.
Uh, and that's, that's what we were thinking. So there's some things like that that they're taking a little more thought than these other buildings. More than, it's becoming a little bit more than just a re-roofing project. But our intention is to come back with you with options with cost so that you can make a decision how far you want to go with that. Uh, so that's where we're at on those. Uh, the Chancery renovation, uh, we're again, since Mister Harold's now on, we're meeting with him to, to relook at, the original idea and talking to Mister Jones previously was that the roof, the, uh, units were in good shape and we weren't planning on doing much there. Uh, all we, all we're planning, still planning on doing is interior renovation. Uh, but we need to find out again. We just need to let you know if those units are in good shape so you plan for the future, future. And if, uh, but we're, the, if you remember the upper floor, and I've got plans of it, uh, I'm gonna give a handout to y'all right now, I guess, since we're talking about it.
Those can't be that bigger unit up there.
No, there, there, well, there's some on the roof and there's some on the ground, uh, and I think the ones on the ground serve the bottom floor. The ones on the roof just serve the top floor. But if you remember, what we're doing on, on this, on this project is we're moving Renee's department on to the top floor along with. Let's see, let me get up here. On the top floor, you'll have the permit, planning department, veterans affairs, uh, nine-one-one address and the coroner's office, I believe, is, is what's going on on up. So that's on the east side of the building, we're pretty much reconfiguring that and on the west side of the building, we're just mainly uh, redoing the toilets to make sure they meet ADA. We're doing some minor renovation there. We're adding a break room. So that's where most of your costs will go. On the lower floor.
What about the health department?
Uh, yeah, the health department. We got an office in there. I'm sorry. Thank you, Judge. Keep me straight.
Well, I can't read this small type, so.
There's, there's a large plan that's look, that, cause I can't either.
You got your eyes.
And on the bottom floor, the only thing that's going on the bottom floor is elections commission and we're trying to keep that to minimum. Uh, we're at, we're dividing up, there's four offices down there right now. I think we're splitting that up into five offices. We haven't.
I thought we were gonna put, uh, the coroner downstairs also.
We weren't, originally, we really weren't gonna deal downstairs, but it's, it's upstairs. It's just, it's just an office and a secretary.
He doesn't have any traffic, I think is what you're talking about, Jake.
He does have some people come in, uh, some family members come to his office sometimes.
I think the idea originally was anything with, with a lot of public was going upstairs rather than going downstairs because of the. Yeah, you know, originally we even talked about keeping downstairs just for storage. So, but I think eventually what we're doing downstairs is now just, we're opening up that existing courtroom downstairs. We're just opening up so there's big gathering areas on election night or whatever. And then we're just adding some offices downstairs or reconfiguring some space. We're not adding any square footage, but there'll be some demolition down there.
How much change has done, have you done to the, to the original plan?
Uh, on the upstairs.
On the downstairs.
On the downstairs, not a whole lot. What you see in the downstairs, in the hatch area is where the work is going, the rest of it. But, but in real, in reality, we're not really doing in some of those storage rooms, we're not doing a whole lot of, of, at all. We're just closing up. We had to add another, we're having to add another exit out of the elections training room, which just goes back around the hall. You have to have two exits out of there if it's more than fifty people, which is potential of being more than fifty, at least according to the code, whether or not there is. The code requires us to do that. Uh, so we're adding a little corridor there. It's just circling around, uh. So we're trying to keep.
They saying they gonna have training over there? There's no way. That, you can't do that there. There's no parking. That, that's unrealistic. Y'all waiting too? I ain't the only one here. I mean, there's no word park back here.
I just heard what you said. I didn't think about it.
Their own training and just keep doing the bigger, bigger trainings.
Yeah, that's what I think they're thinking, Steve, but.
Elects, you know, election commissioners receiving their own training.
When do they normally conduct their training?
Yeah, it's a. Uh, nighttime, isn't it?
Yeah, it is. Yeah.
I think they'll have access to the main courthouse parking area for.
They usually go over to the, the EOC building to do their training.
Yeah, yeah, we've got other options for them on training, absolutely. This could be the site.
Depends on which training you're talking about.
I, I, I think as long as you schedule their training for periods of time where the court is not in session, then you can address the parking issue that way.
Renee?
Yes, sir.
Are you good with this? Have you seen this?
This is, this is based on the last plan we, yeah.
You wanna look at it again?
Can the ladies at nine-one-one access, can they?
I got, I got, here's an offer.
They've got one.
So that you don't have to walk down the hall and, I mean, y'all work.
Yeah, they're right.
Close.
Yeah.
So is this, is, that looks like a wall that separates
There is a wall.
Nine-one-one from y'all. You had to go out to the major hall, go down and come in?
There is. They had that existing foul room there, um, you know what kind of, what's the?
Yeah, it's high density shelving in there and we're just trying to reuse that rather than spend money to tear it out. It's on a, it's an existing Chancery current files. So we're leaving that.
Okay, well.
Uh, we put the nine-one-one in separate area upstairs. We're closing off, if you, if you remember, there's a spire stair that goes down to the basement. We're closing that off for work room. We're just trying to separate the upper floor from the bottom floor, basically. So we've gone through several, several gyrations of this, of, uh, of, of the upper floor anyhow and, and uh, this latest is like a third or fourth option and Renee's been able to see that. And we still got some more, you know, refining to do. This is just basic plan. The concept originally is to try and use as many of the existing walls as possible, just to save costs.
So it's the dark shaded area that you're gonna be making changes to?
Yeah, the dark, on, on the upper floor, the dark walls, the black walls are the new walls. The, the existing courtroom to the left, that was Judge Grant's, we're not really doing a whole lot to it. We're carving out a break room and everything and that, the rest of that's just gonna stay as it is. It's open space, but we weren't, again, there's a couple of options we can do. We can, we can gut it and leave it open or we can just leave it like it is, that we're not using. Obviously, yeah, obviously if you gut it, there's some more demolition cost involved, but to do it while you're doing the rest of this may be in, in long term, probably be less costly. But if you gut it, then you've got to put some finishes back and that kind of thing, I would think.
Couldn't you just like remove some of the stuff?
We could remove the millwork, yeah, and leave it and, and just leave it whatever they're exposed.
Oh, so I couldn't do that, just unfinished. We don't know what we're gonna do with it.
Right, right. We could do that.
Like everywhere, everywhere else does it.
Yeah, we can leave it like it is. It's, uh, because we really, it's just leftover space. We really didn't, it wasn't a program need part at this point. Unless y'all wanna add something to it.
Well, either way, it's gotta be gutted out.
Right. The bottom floor is added, uh, originally, I don't.
The lower floor, you're talking?
Yes, sir, the lower floor.
What do you, what do you not like about it?
I don't know, I don't want the floors clean.
So what is the grade in there?
I don't want shaded in.
That's what they're working on.
Just all this.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's where the work will be done and really in the, in the bottom store area, there's minor work in there. It's just work that, uh, when you start.
Look like they want to.
We're having to pull, pull this down there and make that made in.
Yeah.
Just bring it all the way, all the way down.
Once you start getting into doing a little bit like that, this is that five conversion, they've got three offices in reception. We'll make it into five offices, one for each of the.
A receptionist?
There, there's a reception down there right now. We're not, we won't have one in that plant. Uh, Judge Hayden's office, I think, is in this corner. I think that's the reception area and then we just, so this is all the new walls going down there.
Oh, just the black.
Yeah, the black. We're trying to use those other wa, walls.
What if, why would you not have a hallway split it down, all the way down the middle?
On the bottom floor?
Hmm.
Uh-huh.
We can do that, just try and save costs.
Yeah, look, the only thing they're adding on the bottom floor is the dark, is the black walls.
Yeah, I know. I know, but you can't.
Go all the way down where it'd be easier to get in that storage instead of going through everybody's.
We can, uh, it's just, uh, well, it's just trying to keep that room as big as possible and then we didn't think there'd be that much traffic going through there.
No, I guess you're right. Wouldn't be that much traffic.
But, I mean, it certainly, again, I, I think our, 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 and, and we may be a little bit off on this, we're just trying to reuse what, what we can.
Yeah.
What's gonna happen is as soon as we start doing something on one area, it's gonna, we're gonna probably have to like flooring, take it up because you won't be able to match it and that kind of thing, so. That's, that's. That's, that's what happens typically when you get into these renovation projects, you think you can do this, and then you take off a piece and-
Well, you had given us an estimate before on some of the workups y'all done.
Yeah, I've given you, I, I have, and I've got, you'll see down there right now that it's gone up because we added that bottom floor. Now, uh, we're, we're looking at somewhere between seven hundred and seven hundred and fifty thousand for both floors, is what we're thinking. Uh, and we'll be able to update that a little bit more, but I'll be honest with you, right now with this coronavirus thing-
That might've been a mistake.
Yeah, you just don't know, uh, where things are going. I think actually prices may come down a little bit because people will, but construction's been ongoing, it hasn't really been affected in this state, it's been deemed as an essential business, so it's, it's ongoing. The only, the only issues we've seen with it is, one, some material disruption, especially glass, and, uh, we have had a couple of projects, we had one at Mississippi State shut down for six weeks completely, we've got one in Shreveport that shut down for two weeks. I, I think we're beyond that, that was earlier on, hopefully we're beyond that, unless we have, something happens, a recurrence and an outbreak.
So what level are we at currently on our courthouse? What percentage?
Ninety percent, I'd say, about ninety.
So we can go where right now and-
Yeah, I'd be glad, yes, as a matter of fact, I was gonna suggest, I think there's enough there, the courtrooms, what's, what's lacking on the courtrooms are even the millwork, all the woodwork, that's a labor intensive, so that's still lacking some. Uh, some of the, they've gotten almost all the base asphalt poured, they got eighty percent of it, and then they'll put the final course on. This week, looking forward, it looks like we've got a whole week of good weather from here on out. Uh, they, they're, they've already put in the irrigation system, the piping for the landscaping, so I've talked to them about that, they don't see that being a problem. Uh, it's, now, Jay, what it's trying to do is just trying to get everything sequenced, uh, the painters are about ninety percent through, and they can't do too much more till they get some of the rest of this done. They got to put in, some of the flooring is in, a good chunk of it, but they still got that to do, uh, they got to finish up the ceiling tile, but it'd be good if, if you would like, uh-
Monday, I'd like to over and take a look at it.
Okay. I can, you know, I can meet anybody over there and walk you through there.
Do they have elevators in there yet?
They do, but-
They work?
That, I'm not sure, that, uh, they do work, but they've gotta be inspected, uh, let me check on that, that, I don't think they've been inspected.
I don't necessarily have to go up there.
Take word, take word, will you?
Well, you can get into the upper floor if I, from upstairs.
I know, that's why you parked upstairs.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
The week-
Yeah, Monday, I'd like to take a look at it.
Okay.
Word's one of those official elevator repairmen guys.
Oh, really?
Oh, yeah, he's got elevator rescue training, he's been to one of them classes.
Okay.
Take him with you, if you get stuck in the elevator, word gets you.
We'll just leave you there.
Yeah, that's possible, that's one of the choices, yeah.
Well, sure. Uh, and then, like I said, I put the, I put all the cost, break, the itemized cost on, behind there, that was just a summary, and I, you know, I can answer about any of this stuff, try and give you an answer. Uh, are we on record, I was gonna say how confident I am about finishing on May thirty first, the substantial-
Yeah, you better hold off on that.
We're not paying attention to that.
So, close enough now that we need to set up, getting our roving folks lined up?
We're working on a day to do what we're supposed to call a pre-bid.
Okay.
Several things to do.
Okay.
But we really didn't have to do anything until we had some-
At least a couple, three months out?
We can't ask people to hold pricing for six months.
Right. I understand.
Oh, put ya.
Okay. You done?
Unless y'all have any questions.
I do have one item while, while Carl was up here, Bridget had to ask you about the vending machines.
Right.
Our contract is getting ready to come up again, maybe even go out for bid, and there are four possible areas to put two vending machines in each room. There's a break room in the Justice Court with the staff, uh, the Chancery clerk staff, the judges, Chancery judges staff, and there's a waiting area, vending in a, a family waiting area. So that's a possibility of two machines for each of those, so eight more machines that we might, but we didn't know if we needed to add them in every place, if they were necessary.
We have the power and the design is there for that, uh, but that's up to y'all, there-
Well, we don't buy them, right? So-
No, it's just with, it's just within the contract, we just needed to know.
We have to tell the vendor what to do.
If we put some more in there.
Typically, what you see in one of these rooms is, is one for drinks and one for snacks.
Right.
And that's why there's two in each one of those areas. That's, again, we just, we're just trying, it's easy to put the power in when you're building it, and then if you don't use it, you don't use it.
So just let every department decide if they want one in there? Um, I just didn't know y'all had a, a preference.
I don't.
I mean, the power's what, just a hundred and ten on those?
Uh, yeah, but you gotta have the space, and I forget what all goes in, but it's basically, yeah, that's all it is, really.
Well, it's not gonna hurt to have it.
Have the power there.
I don't have it there, they don't use, they don't use it.
Don't take nothing to pull it.
That'd be just that much less that he sells. Thank you, Carl.
I got.
All right, other public comment?
Y'all ready to go get you?
Yeah.
So you got somebody else?
Yeah, there's a, there's a gentleman here from River Chase that, uh, is, he, he, he wants some, some curb work, uh, but he called me last week, now he wants some, uh, uh, speed bumps.
Speed bumps?
Yeah.
We don't do those on certain days, you do?
Not yet.
No, I don't wanna start that.
You don't wanna start that, are you going?
No.
I don't need speed bumps, I want speed tables.
What's that?
Where the whole car has to get up on top of it.
No, I don't want any at all.
Okay, Mr. Joe, come on up, you're up. Mr. Ty?
Okay.
Finally meet you.
Yes, sir.
Um, I'm president of the River Chase Homeowners Association, as you know, and the reason I'm here is at your request to come in, we've had an influx of young families move in our neighborhood with small children, and the speeding is horrendous in our neighborhood, it's just terrible, and I'm requesting four speed bumps to be, if that's possible, if I could get four speed bumps in there, just to slow the traffic down. We do have curb issues that I've talked to you about, but I've let you alone since you've been dealing with that other problem.
Since we're still not done in the end back there.
And, uh, but those are the two things that, at your request, I've come to talk to you guys on.
I wanted you to be aware that, you know, I told you, I'm one hundred percent in favor of doing it, especially since we can't seem to get radar in our county, and we need some mechanism to be able to slow people down, but, you know, it takes three votes to be able to make that happen, so we need two more over here.
Okay, well, let me say this, the, the sheriff's department has done a terrific job. I call every once in a while, and I will ask them to come out, and of course, they don't have radar.
Yes, sir.
But you, they can see the speeding, and they can see the, I mean, they blow through the stop signs like they're not there, and they stop them and, and, and tell them, you know, they're doing the wrong thing.
Yes, sir.
And, and it's become a real concern due to the fact that now we have a half a dozen houses that's got kids and it's small.
Yeah.
You know, it just needs to slow down, and the sheriff's department can only do so much, but they've done a terrific job, every time I've called and asked, they've been there.
Yes, sir.
This is a request that happens all over the county, your, yours is not, I mean, it's the same thing.
Every, everywhere.
Everywhere, I get a cause all the time, well, speed bumps, oh, we need speed bumps, we need to slow the, now we got children, uh, I mean, it's, it's constant, even on heavily traveled, real rural roads, they want a speed bump, I mean, it's just-
Can, can somebody address what really happens a lot of times when you put speed bumps in?
Yes, I'd be glad to, Steve. Um, we've, we've consistently have maintained our policy for years and years, I've been doing the work as legal counsel for the board, it's hard to believe that, uh, I'm in year twelve, uh, but, um, we, we have consistently maintained our policy that we will not allow any sort of impedance to traffic flow for a number of reasons. The first reason, foremost reason is that first response vehicles have to get from point A to point B as quickly as possible. Speed bumps create an impediment to a rapid response, so you've got, uh, fire trucks, ambulance, and law enforcement, all of which need to get from point A to point B as quickly as possible in emergency situations. Speed bumps do not promote that, in fact, what they end up doing is tearing up vehicles, um, when they're trying to get from point A to point B fast. So that, that issue of first response is a primary concern that the board has always expressed, and we, so we've resisted every effort to install speed bumps in the county period, we just don't allow, in fact, recently, we had some, a subdivision HOA that took it upon themselves to install speed bumps themselves at their own cost, and we required them to remove them because they did that.
There's alternatives, though.
That's a public road.
If you want to take over the road-
Yes.
And maintain it as be private, then you can put a speed bump-
That, that's correct.
Private, private neighborhoods can.
Yeah, so it would be a reversion of the roads within the subdivision development from public to private, that, that can occur, the board at request, upon request, and assuming that all individuals who live there agree, it has to be unanimous, if there's one hold out, it doesn't happen, uh, as long as everybody that accesses their residential property by way of the public road agrees that it should be returned to private, it can be, that, so that's an option. Uh, if they want speed bumps, they can take over maintenance and, uh, be able to control that. The, the second reason that we generally don't allow them is the liability exposure that they create. It's a public road, it's our public road, we maintain it. Somebody's vehicle gets torn up because of a-
Speed bump.
-speed bump, uh, guess who's gonna be on the hook for that potentially? It's us, so that's a taxpayer expense, and so the decision, the policy has always been, we just, we don't allow them. The third reason that we don't allow them is that there are a multitude of national level studies that show they don't work. People drive to the speed bump, they go over the speed bump, and they rapidly go away from the speed bump, the actual speed at which they're traveling is faster than if the speed bump was not there. So they approach quickly, they go over, and they speed away quickly, and so they, they don't work for speed control. We, we just simply don't allow traffic control devices for the purpose of regulating speed, their purpose is for safety, okay? So, uh, for those three reasons primarily, the board has decided consistently and has set that as the policy, we will not allow them. And in fact, just recently, we required someone that, that, they did it without knowing that it's our policy, uh, they installed them themselves at their cost, we required them to remove them.
We were gonna do that, but I talked to Jay first. Um, we have assessments, as any homeowner association does, um, but going, doing that, even if we could get a hundred percent of people to change that over to private, pri- uh, roads, we would not have the funds to maintain.
Right.
Our assessments aren't that big.
You, you don't wanna go down that road, it's, for example, you just had the pipe blowout down there, what do we pay, what, what do we spend on that?
We're not through.
Sorry, sorry, so what, what are we gonna spend on that?
Oh, it's gonna be, I don't know, Mike just walked out, it's gonna be over a hundred thousand.
Just, just on that?
Yeah.
And you don't want, you don't want to put that on-
And at seventy dollars a household, you know, a year, in an assessment, you can't, you can't do it.
If you, if you were just gonna repave your neighborhood-
Right.
Well, you couldn't, yeah, you couldn't do that.
I mean, bankrupt your whole group.
But it's a real problem, and there are people that blow through the stop signs, this is my first time I brought this up here, I have other subdivisions, same issue, and I personally think that, you know, uh, we, we need them, I think speed table would be good, but, you know, we have had, we did get authority for one subdivision, if they got a certain level of participation, uh, of the neighborhood willing to do it, but they were not able to, to-
Right.
-get that after many years of trying, so I don't think that's ever possible.
Yeah, Jay, I think, uh, you may be referring to rumble strips, um, so what we typically do, that's, that's an option, uh, that we will typically authorize because they're not an impediment, uh, to first response, but those are the, those are the, the sound, they create sound as you approach a stops, a, a stop sign to alert the driver, hey, you're about to hit a stop sign here, prrrr, prrrr, those things, uh, but, so we have installed those and allowed those to be installed.
Let me tell you, the person that lives social that is not gonna want that-
That's why we require, uh, the, the neighborhood to agree to them, because the people that are gonna be impacted are the ones whose houses are immediately adjacent to where those rumble strips are located.
I can understand that.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm open, we gotta do something about speeding, guys, I mean, it's, it's not, to me, it's unacceptable to sit here and walk out and say, okay, we couldn't get anything done about the speeding.
Exactly, and I wish our state legislators could hear that, they need to hear that, because they are the ones who are standing in the way of getting radar.
Radar would-
Your state legislators will not pass radar for county sheriffs. They assume that the sheriff's gonna use them as a speed trap.
Yeah, and store communities on it.
And, and, and we've gone and said, I tell you what, we'll take that off the table. Authorize the sheriff to run radar, no fines will be issued, they still won't give it to us.
Or let any, any, any fines go to the school district, or go to whatever, where it shows that the sheriff is not trying to make money off of it.
We've done everything we know to do, I, and I won't hasten to add, because I don't want it to get back, uh, to our guys, Rankin County legislators, uh, that, that we know that they're not support, they support it. Rankin County's delegation has faithfully supported the introduction of a radar bill every year that it gets introduced, it's getting killed in committees, uh, before it ever has a chance to see the light of day, if it ever gets to the floor, I believe it'll pass. The problem is, we can't seem to get any traction at state legislators. So if you and your folks can rally and go to your legislator and say, this has got to happen, there is no reason why that man right there is allowed to go out on the interstate and run accidents on the interstate and control traffic on the interstate because MHP has got whoever they've got sixty miles somewhere else, they call that man and say, can you get out there and help us? So they're fine for him to go out there and do that, but they won't let us run radar? I don't understand it.
We've been-
And no legislator that I know of can explain that to me, why can, why is it okay for him to run traffic control on the, on the federal highway, but he can't use radar in the county? Why, why we trust him to do anything if we can't trust him to run radar the correct way? It needs to be a, a speed control device, a tool in the hands of that man right there and his people.
Mm-hmm.
So the legislature needs to fix this, that's the answer. Now, speed bumps, radar for that man.
What we've done also in the same thing, they've tried to do it where, set a population, you know, population of a county, and let, whether they could have radar or not, because a lot of the smaller counties don't want it, don't need it maybe, but, uh, we, every avenue option that I can think of, we've tried, you know, why not do a population?
A hundred thousand or over, let, let the citizens decide, or let the sheriff decide, not mandated, letting each county make their own decision.
Hey, Mike, how much, how much does it cost to put a speed bump on a road if you did it? Fall apart?
What kind do you assault, you know, I mean, there's multiple kinds of-
Cover, rubber?
I've seen those rubber nailing kinds before in other counties.
Yeah, I mean, like, say, say the asphalt kind, you were gonna loop it up.
Well, I mean, you're talking about probably a couple hundred dollars a speed bump, and then you gotta remove it, and that's been worked in subdivision, so you're gonna-
Just keeps coming back to them. Are, are you, you wanna make a motion to put speed bumps in subdivisions?
All of them?
Yeah.[1717.62] Why not?
We, we all, we all have the same, we all.
I got, I got two hundred of them, and I got two hundred subdivisions that are asking for the same thing.
Well, I mean, that's.
I'm with you.
That's a lot of taxpayers.
I think, I think.
That's just them, I didn't even start it.
Yeah, I'm with you.
I got them too.
Didn't start it.
I'm just saying, I'm with you, let's do it.
I mean, it's, you gotta, I, I don't know the answer, but I do know that there's a problem.
Yes.
And the problem needs to be solved.
The answer is just what?
Before, we have to see a three year old.
Sounds like we need to speed bump in front of every state legislator's house, that might help us.
You know, I, I don't, I personally don't think the speed bumps help, but there's enough people in my area, the reservoir area, which Jay's got a fragment of the reservoir side, and I got the rest of it. I've got two hundred subdivisions in my area, and they all called me about wanting, wanting subdivisions to have the speed bumps, I don't think that solves the problem, I agree with everything Slay said as far as the damage to the vehicles it's gonna cause, the slowing down of emergency response, I get it. But I've heard enough of it on the same side, if the people want them in there for the damage it's gonna cause, I'm here, let's do it, let's vote, put them in.
Okay.
Well, my, my deal is.
Make a motion?
We got a lot of rural roads, I don't have a lot of subdivisions like they got, I got a lot of rural roads that I had same issue with, they would love to put a speed bump on a dead end road, because there's a lot of people travel that road, going in and out, kids play on side road. But I mean, it's, it's just like, it's a public road and.
We just can't, you, you just, in my mind, you just can't let, let it go and say, hey, there's nothing we can do about it, really? Sir, let me tell you this, since I've been on the board, every year, we've tried to get the legislature to come help, we've even hired lobbyists to go meet with them and talk.
Yeah, that's right, right.
And, I mean, it's not like we're not trying, we, we want them.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not accusing y'all of that, no.
We have the same issues over and over and over, and we just gotta get some help for our sheriff, that's, I mean, that really is, his hands are tied, and. If we had radar, I'm not saying that would stop every person from speeding.
Make them think.
If you put, this, what we've learned through these studies, that you put the speed bumps in there, and you still need the radar, and they, uh, call, they do cause some noise problems, they cause us to have to fix some cars, and then it also causes one to wreck every now and then. They'll hit that dude, bounce up and be in somebody's front yard. Oh, I know, we just, we just had to repack, repair the whole front brick wall to the entrance of our subdivision, somebody running through.